Public duties beyond the scrutiny that 606 does. It's a worthy goal to take on what we've recommended in our petition. We've asked for a process that's open and engaged. Academic success is significantly associated with public engagement and parent engagement. What we proposed will further academic success by further engaging trust and involvement of the parents. I particularly just want to mention and compliment Superintendent Funk. On September 8th, you guys had a meeting about our education standards and were very frustrated with the progress in bringing our standards up to where you'd like to see them. And there was a wonderful moment, just a wonderful moment where Superintendent Funk said, "Well, we've all talked about what the district is doing. We've all talked about what the students are doing, but we need to talk about families. How can we further engage the families and their trust and engagement with our system?" And I just want to say that that was one of the most epiphany moments I think I've seen in this board for a long time. And I'd like you to consider what we're petitioning for as being supportive of an opportunity, not a problem, an opportunity to work together. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I can just leave these with you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Chair.
I have room over here.
Oh. And we can actually give it back to Joan. Or do you want to just put it down here? There we go. Thank you, so I can save them. All right, our next speaker is Jessica Johnson.
I'm going to practice my auctioneer talk. Just kidding. Jessica Johnson, Stillwater, Minnesota. I'm concerned with the following sections of policy 606, which are mostly just standing policies not being amended. Section four, responsibility of selection. Although it states an opportunity for input and consideration of parents and community shall be given, the opportunities to do so through the curriculum development effort and advisory committee have been closed off for as long as I've been attempting to participate. No information available as to how to be a part of said committee, no public record of who's on them, where or when these committees meet, or what it is to be discussed, or what has been discussed. As an arm of the governing body, these details should be readily available to the public. Section five, selection of textbooks and other instructional materials. My concern lies in that the professional staff is tasked with selection of these materials with no outside review unless they themselves deem it controversial as stated in subsection B, at which time they consult with their school principal. You can't ask them to be their own watchdogs. Why is that? Because despite the board and admin stating CRT doesn't exist in the district, substantial evidence exists that says otherwise. The teachers and administration don't believe the curriculum and instructional materials they are using is controversial. Why would they? They themselves are being taught critical race theory, anti-American history, and anti-white propaganda through their college programs, woke Wednesday communications from the cultural liaison tasked with diversity, equity, and inclusion education that's synonymous with CRT, and through professional development both in and out of the district. Professional development books held at the district office include How to be Anti-Racist, Right on Race, What Does It Mean to Be White, Me and White Supremacy, White Privilege, all books teaching the tenants of CRT and doing an injustice to all the students by shifting blame of outcome on anyone of European descent, in particular males, and removing hope of the American dream for all. Two of my kids participated in the Avid program, which was told to me to be aimed at kids organizational habits, problem-solving, critical thinking. I was quite surprised to hear that they were discussing gender ideologies. When I asked for the curriculum, I was told that that was brought in by a program called StoryArc, and therefore that that curriculum was not available. In honor of Black History Month, this teacher addressed the class by stating her name, pronouns, and "I grew up privileged because I'm white." It's not surprising, when doing further research, that the content and the educator resources for AVID, 20 things that I can do to be a more equitable educator, include things such as "I will reject the myth of colorblindness," or "I must not rely on people from historically underprivileged groups to teach me how to improve myself; that in of itself is a practice of privilege." After this proclamation of the leader, by the leader of the class, one student felt empowered to make statements towards classmates such as "That shows your whiteness, and you are a privileged white male." Both myself and the community members that have shared their concerns with me want the curriculum made available to the public, including access to search the school libraries. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ava Michaels.
The fact that there are people in the room tonight, that a group of us took time to write you something thoughtful about the policies pending here tonight, and that a few hundred of us are asking you consideration by petition, these are not problems. These are signs of hope. An empty meeting room on most nights is not a sign of a healthy community engagement. It is a sign that people believe that coming here is a waste of time. Why would we feel this way? Agendas are not posted ahead of time, so we don't know if an item of interest is scheduled. Oh, some of you send them to your campaign Facebook pages or email lists to your friends, but not to me, not to my neighbors. Why don't you want our whole community represented here? When we only hear from inside our own bubble, we quit growing, we quit learning. If we want to speak here, instructions online may or may not, maybe incorrect. They were not correct for this meeting. School board friends were told about signing up last week, but the public was not. Fortunately, your friends told my friends, so I am here. Then, no conversation, no two-way communication at all, you offer me 180 seconds of monologue. This is like throwing a note into a bottle into the sea. Maybe I'm heard, maybe I'll hear back, I don't know. This is something, but this is not real engagement. Friends don't treat friends like this. You have no place to, you have no place official to send comments on past or upcoming concerns. Even here, we could hand in cards with questions, and you could answer them if you cared to. For these policies tonight, you clearly want to keep me from seeing anything dealing the previous selection and purchasing of things you will use to teach my children, our children. Why? Are we so scary? In the United States, our public schools are part of our government. Our public schools are accountable to everyone, everyone who lives in this district. You do your work on our behalf. It must not be secret. We are your neighbors. Let us in. Thank you.
Our last speaker this evening is Diane Palasic.
Thank you, Board and Superintendent Funk. My name is Diane Palasic, and I live in Stillwater Township. And I'm here today because I thanked teachers a lot during my lifetime, but this is the week I wanted to come and thank parents publicly, because this is their week. So I need to thank them historically for all the help they gave my kids through school, and currently for the help they give my grandchildren now. They're the helpers in the middle, and I just want to let them know they're appreciated. Whether they're in the classroom, they're in the health room, they're in the media center, they're on the playground, they direct traffic, they're in the lunchroom to prevent chaos, they direct traffic, I think I said that, and also they're helping one-on-one with students so those students can have a better day. They're in all the places, helping them to learn to think, to ask questions, to find the truth, to make good decisions on. It's important work, and I want them to know they're important, and I want to thank them all, and the district for hiring them. Thank you.
Thank you to all of our speakers, and that concludes tonight's public comment. We're going to call tonight's meeting to order. Welcome everyone in the room tonight. Joan, can we do the roll call, please?
Director Hockert.
Here.
Director Kelsenberg.
Here.
Director Petrie.
Here.
Director Portbenny.
Here.
Director Thielander.
Here.
Chair Sherman.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Great. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Can I get a second?
A second?
Great. Director Hockert with a second. All those in favor of approving tonight's agenda, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We're going to turn it over to our students this evening.
Okay, so for the student report, we have freshmen have finally settled into the high school, but trying to keep grades up has been a struggle with many classmates. Office hours has influenced and motivated many students to use their time wisely, and many social events like sports games, music concerts, and other events have been great for all SAHS students to participate outside of school. Juniors and seniors are studying extra hard for the end of their semester finals, and many are trying hard to get their grades up. There's been a lot of stress with tests and projects, but everyone is looking forward to the fun festivities like snowball coming up this Saturday to wrap up the semester.
All giving sports report. Girls Alpine skiing nearly closed out their conference championship with an impressive win last week. They have two conference meets left, one tonight, and lead by over 100 points. The boys team is chasing Woodbury down the stretch. Our gymnasts remain unbeaten in conference and won their third invitational of the season on Saturday. Their 162.25 is the second highest score in the state to date. They travel to White Bear Lake tonight. The girls hockey team clinched the conference with a 4-1 win over Roseville last Saturday. They host Eastridge tonight. The boys hockey team tied Blake last Saturday, 3-3, and host Woodbury today. Both boys and girls Nordic teams are doing well in the conference and will be competing at Battle Creek Park on Thursday. The wrestling team lost a dual meet to Moundsview last Wednesday, but rebounded by winning the St. Croix Falls Invitational. They'll be competing at Elk River this Friday. Something to note, Audrey Ryagotsky and Bianca Edie remain undefeated in girls wrestling this year. The girls basketball team beat Irondale last Friday and lost to Rochester Mayo on Saturday. They will travel to Creighton tomorrow. The boys basketball team lost a tough one to Irondale last week and will host Creighton tomorrow tonight. And our boys swim and dive team lost a closer duel to Eastridge last week, but they earned a spot and competed in state true team meet this past weekend. They travel to Park on Thursday. The adapted floor hockey team is 1-1, beating Mankato and losing to Burnsville. They host South Suburban tomorrow, and the section music festival will take place February 6th at Eastridge. It features our band, choir, and orchestra performers.
Thank you. Any questions for our students? Okay, Superintendent Funk?
Just two things tonight. First of all, Diane, I think you stole my thunder on the pair of professionals. But I just want to publicly thank the pairs. You know, we have approximately 200 in our district, and they do behind-the-scenes work that really benefit the students, they help our teachers, and, you know, we couldn't survive as a school system without them. So, thanks, publicly want to thank the pairs for all the work that they do. The second thing that I want to make the public aware of, we've had a lot of comments on this over the first semester. We are going to start with our new bus company tracking again for families, so they can start to see if a bus is late, they can actually go online and look at an app to find out where the bus is. And so that is going to get turned on on January 31st, the first day of second semester. That was our target when we started. The drivers have been trained on it, and so we should be able to start following our students as they're coming and going to school, which is a real positive for us. Just to note, families will have to go and get their login information from Power School to be able to do this, but that's a good news story for people.
Great. Any questions for Superintendent Funk? I do not have a report this evening. With that, we're going to move to the consent agenda, which appears on the screen. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the consent agenda, items A through I. Can I get a second? Second. Okay. Director Petrie, all those in favor of approving tonight's consent agenda, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, and tonight, we're going to do reports first. We're going to start with a demographic update, and I believe I'll turn that over to you, Superintendent Funk, and we have a guest speaker.
Yep, Dennis Cheesebrowl from Teamworks International here tonight, and he is going to provide a demographic update to the school board on future trends for the next five to 10 years for our student population. Dennis, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Well, good evening, Board Chair and Board, Superintendent. It's a pleasure, honored to be with you, and to continue our support of this district as we have over several decades, actually, in supporting this district. As you can see the agenda, we're going to go through introduction, some key findings. We're going to differentiate between community demographics, that of the larger community, then dive into district demographics, look at how to look at enrollment projections by taking into account those things that are trending naturally outside of your influence, and those things that could or could not be trending based upon your influence of planning, policy, and actions that you may take, and what might be a projection out over time of the impact on that, on your enrollment and your facility's utilization. And finally, at the end, we're going to identify, in partnership with the Office of the Superintendent, we've identified some key areas of concern that you should be, you and the public should be aware of, that you can address in coming meetings, and maybe some key messages to walk away from. At any time that there are questions on your part, just please ask. We'll make, rather than waiting to the end, we'll just ask questions as they come up.
Great.
All right?
Thank you.
Sure. Introduction, our school analytics services are designed specifically to provide the Office of the Superintendent with data analysis in the mid to long range for strategy work in their pursuit of excellence in management. It also is useful to a school board in your governance work, specifically with regards to policy development, long-range planning, operational oversight, facilities planning, and public engagement. So, while we may dive into the quote-unquote "there might be things" into the weeds that are largely management, I'm trying to pull out for you that there are governance implications in a number of different areas, and usually it's the partnership between you and the Office of the Superintendent that really makes this work well. Primary goals of the presentation, to inform the school board and the public. Hopefully, it'll generate discussion. We're providing you a roll-up of the data and information. It'll provide you, hopefully, some discussion points both now and in the near future, and it's to develop some insight and options and opportunities. Okay? Thank you. So, some key overall findings, and I'm going to look at point A, a key point to understand. The data that you see in the key findings here are inclusive of live birth, your current market share of school-aged children in the district, and what is planned development. It's exclusive, does not include things like increasing your market share and the impact that will have. What might be future development, and what is, we define as generational shift. Where are there concentrations of a combination of homes that have been held in ownership for long periods of time, where there's also concentration of older-age citizens? Generational shifts is when, in a three-to-five-year period of time, you go from, as we sometimes say, no little kids running around, to where did they all come from, usually following for-sale signs three years earlier. And we've worked with a lot of districts where they've been surprised by generational shifts because they haven't monitored it. And we're going to identify that. But exclusive of that, your zero-to-four-year-old population between now and 2027 is projected to grow. And you're going to see, in fact, you're in a, from a growth position, you're in a bit of an unusual positive position in this district for growth of zero-to-four-year-olds, which is, as you know, your kindergartners very soon. As well as your five-to-14, it's a very slight half percent growth. All your student cohort survival ratios are above 101%. What that means, when we look at a student group come into kindergarten, then go to first grade, then go to second grade, are they declining less than 100% or are they growing? Typically, they are growing based upon two things: new development, or increased market share, or open enrollment. In this case, what we see over many years of providing the service for you is that you're above 101%, you're growing naturally based upon new developments in certain parts of your district.
I have a question about the zero-to-four-year-old population growing at 5.6%. Is that consistent with national trends? I thought the growth was much smaller than that.
No.
And so, do you know what that's attributable to? Is it...
Right. Yeah. Number one, it's against most of the trends. So if you're, if, I could just take a little bird walk, because Director Petrie, you've raised it. Nationally, this country is still in a birth rate decline, and at the lowest rate in all of our lifetimes. Okay? To give you an example, within the metro area, in some districts that we work with, live birth is down 50% to 70% since 2008. When we work with districts that birth rates are going up and projected to rise, it's usually attributed to new development, resale, and the influx of young families. Okay? Also realize that sometimes there's a miss, there's a misread that in new construction, new roofs means new kids, and that percentage is dropping in terms of new roofs don't mean new kids like they used to. So when you look at 5.6% of that is a very positive trend for your district, and you will see it is different than your surrounding districts, and it's different than that of the state.
Thank you for that. Thank you, just to follow up here. So if new roofs doesn't mean kids, right? Do you think that the new developments are mainly the attraction as to why young families are moving into the district? It must be much more than that.
Well, it is much more than that because young families are typically attracted to either new development, or what we would say is existing homes that are more affordable. So sometimes when you look at new development, you have to also look at the price of that new development. Okay? So there's an affordability index. So we'll work with districts without a lot of development that will have influx of new families and rising birth rates because of the affordability component of housing.
Okay. So, there are other districts as well, and you're saying it's unusual for us to have that kind of growth, but there are other districts that have similar new developments, affordability, but don't have the same type of growth that we have. What is causing the difference there?
So, okay, there, so without getting into the weeds, right, you're different than the population of the state overall, in a positive way. You may, you are, as you look at the data, you're going to see a higher growth rate than surrounding districts. But we are working with districts with similar development and similar housing to Stillwater, and they are seeing similar rates of growth. So you're unusual to this, you're different than the state as a whole, but you're not unique in like districts, you're very similar to like districts. And I hope you can appreciate, we're not going to start naming districts, but just trust me, there are like districts here, right, in Minnesota that are similar to you that are showing similar numbers. So, also realize that your student yields from single-family homes varies widely. So when we say .25, or we say .44, that's of your enrolled kids. What's the enrolled kids per household? And it varies widely, which is why we don't use in our projections, single numbers for an entire district, because as you can see, you're nearly two-to-one, depending upon which. So when we, which census block and which boundaries that you're dealing with. So we deal at the discrete level, recognizing that there are different student yields from single-family homes, but just so you know, we are dealing with student yields from all types of housing. We point out single-family homes because it is by far your largest housing stock. Housing development is projected to continue to grow in the south and the southeast, not news to any of you who live here. You're going to continue to grow in diversity, especially in multirace ethnicity. So you're going to see when we get into the charts, and this is true for almost all districts. The largest growth is in other, which is multirace. It's the largest growing student population, and will continue to be, in fact, in a number of our districts, it is becoming the second-largest student group. And that's especially with younger students. So just be aware of that. Your market share is 70, just about 70%, slightly dropping from 2018 through 2022. And we're to talk in just a few minutes about the impact of market share on facilities, utilization, and long-range development. What market share means is of the total student age population, what percent are enrolled in any one of your schools? Okay? So what this says is about 70% are enrolled in your schools, and 30% are enrolled in other choices and options. You need to add capacity at the elementary and middle school levels and address issues of aging facilities. And as you do this, in districts that are growing, they typically have to think about district boundaries as a continuous project, not, "We're done, we'll never have to talk about this again." No, it's a continual process in areas of growth and change. Okay? So some community demographics. We tried to kind of boil this down into some real slides that I think paint the picture. Your community demographics, as you can see on the left-hand, from 2010 to 2022 and projections of 2027, there is growth and change in the, in population as defined by the government. Okay? So when we look at these classifications, this is as defined by government classifications. Okay? Grounded in the 2020 census. For future student age populations, they're growing, going to call your attention, those rows in yellow are five-year bands, the purple are 10-year bands, so just, you have to kind of keep that, that's why we highlight them. But this is where we talk about the 5.6 and the 2.1% growth in those, while you see some decline in the slightly other populations, and then as you look out, you can see growth in the largest population, which is your boomers moving to retirement. But just so you know, boomers are no longer the largest generation, so if you've been, heard that. It's now millennials, and Generation Z will soon be surpassing millennials. Okay? So it just gives you a sense of where your community is going. These numbers are very typical. We provide some maps just for some information. So based upon projections, and if you see these odd shapes, they are census blocks. Census blocks is the smallest geographic unit that you can purchase data based on census. You can't, you can't get information on the individual house, but you can get it on census blocks. So these census blocks, you always see in the upper-left-hand corner, what are we looking at? Total population, zero-to-four, projected in 2027, with a color gradation scale always in the lower right. In this case, the lightest of yellow is less than 50, where the darkest is greater than 200. So it begins to have you look at what's projected for zero-to-four-year-olds, and this already has planned development loaded into it. So planned development and trends in birth rate are already loaded into these census projections. And then we take a look at the, we always split this because of the length of your district into north and south. And then you look at five-to-14-year-olds. And again, you're going to see some of the similar patterns of where student populations are and where they're projected to be concentrated. There isn't a major change in concentration of the patterns you have today. Okay? And then we take a look at the resident births. So if you take a look at resident births based upon your elementary school boundaries, so we use... so we use elementary boundaries because they cover your whole district, and you're able to see the actual live birth and the percent of growth over the last 12 years. And you're going to see that in any one boundary, live birth goes up and down. So you want to look at these numbers overall. So you have areas of growth, you have areas of decline. But it does add up to growing population compared to your surrounding and nearby districts. So that's when I said you are in a different pattern than many other districts around you. Okay?
And Dennis, just so I'm clear, because this is by attendance area, the attendant, I mean, boundary changes are frequently done, so these are different boundaries then, depending on the year you're looking at.
Right, so what we did is, when we back, what we did is, we normalized to your current boundaries back in history.
Okay.
Okay? So as we look at resident births in this past year, 2021 to 2022, the northern area is, it's a decade trend of lower resident births. When you look at the yellow and the light yellow versus in the South versus the very dark brown. So there is a, there is a difference north to south in the district about resident burst projections, resident burst history, and even in the past year. All right? Now we're going to shift to district demographics. So what we've been looking at is community demographics overall. Now let's take a look at the district itself. You're aware of your student enrollment, so this is your data. And as you can see, it's, it's a slight decline. Your elementaries are beginning to come back, but it represents a fairly, you might look at this as a slight decline, but it's not dramatic. So just so you know, sometimes we work with districts where they're talking about 30% decline going on in this period of time. And especially since COVID, some districts have had far more decline than you are looking at. Okay? So there's your numbers. We did what we call a heat map, which kind of says, "But where are our kids?" So this is where your students, not student age populations. Where are your students concentrated? And so it kind of says, well, you have three areas of concentration, which you're well aware of. I will tell you that we've done this heat map over time. Occasionally, we take a look at this. It's changed, but in a nutshell, your heat map has been shifting south and slightly west.
Yes.
If you go back to that previous slide with the historical student enrollment, how does, you know, so you see K through five is increasing. So be interested, you know, how does Stillwater Public Schools compare to other districts for that six to eight and nine to 12? Because I know a lot of families that, you know, just proximity, they'll go to the local elementary school, and no matter what, they're planning to maybe do a private school, or, you know,
Right.
You know, a religious school. How is that accounted for, or that just kind of is what it is within the data?
Well, we typically for, it's very typical within, just to talk about Minnesota. It's very typical to have a faith-based option. It's typically about 10% of the population. You also, most districts have other options like charter schools, other options. It all depends upon the structure of those. So some of those are, are the, we call the pre-K five or pre-K six, and then you'd see that uptick. The pattern that we're seeing is more and more of those options are moving to more grades, to longer spans, to even going into high schools. So we are starting to see, if you're asking what's a trend line we're seeing, we're trying to, as that marketplace changes, then the impact on public schools changes because you don't get that middle school bump, or you don't get that high school bump that you may have in the past. Does that make sense? Okay? Number, heat map. And then there's potential growth factors, which are market share, future housing development. So future housing development is development not yet platted or planned. But in many districts, we are asked to say, "What happens if, if land that is likely, highly likely to develop would develop?" So I'll give you an example, because I think sometimes examples are useful. Six, seven years ago, we've been working with, for example, White Bear Lake for a number of years. Six, seven years ago, they asked us to do future housing development. They chose a percent of development over the next 20 years. That determined the size of their high school, which is opening next year. The size of the high school was not determined about their live birth. It was determined by, we believe in the next 20 years, X acres of land will turn into homes, which will yield X number of high school kids. That's what they've sized their high school to. So that's an example of looking at future housing and saying, "Where is it going?" And housing turnover is what we would call the generational shift, and we're going to go through these three factors. First of all, market share. We thought it might be helpful to put...
Dennis, I just had a quick question about that, when you were, the example of White Bear Lake.
Yeah.
Thank you so much for that. They don't have very many charter schools in their district, right?
I believe they have three.
Oh, they do?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Because I was thinking that our situation might be a little bit more complicated because it's not just, you know, calculating how many, you know, planned developments there might be in the future because you don't really know what sort of decisions parents would make.
Right, yeah. So they are, they are, they're surrounded by districts. They have faith-based options, which are, their faith-based options are probably, are on a par with yours, or about a par with theirs. Their charter school options may not be as robust as some of yours, but they have more, they have several options. And they have grown in the last few years.
So you're able to take those factors into account when you, when you, you know, project into the future?
Correct. Right?
Okay.
How is farmland accounted for within that future development?
Well, when you, when you take a look at farmland, what we have to take a look at is farmland and, and quite honestly, either development of musulines and the planning of the local civic governments in terms of long-range planning and county-based planning on musulines and development of that. And the development appetite of local communities, because not every community wants to develop in the same way. So some communities want the residential development, some want the 10 acres, some want the five acre. We try to take that into account as we find it. As we look at market share, when you look at, again, the census blocks, you're going to look at, I would just say, one way of looking at this, look at blue and green versus yellow. You can call it salmon, I'm not sure what color to call that one, the middle one. It's not pink. I think they just chose, our researchers chose the colors to confuse me. But if you look, if you look at the yellow to the dark brown, are those areas that are at near or above your target for market share? And those in the yellow and the green and blue are less than. And it looks, takes a look on the left-hand side, elementary as of fall of this year, last year, middle and high school. And you're looking at the northern part, and then this is the southern part. So in terms of general pattern, in general pattern, you have higher market shares in the South. You have lower market shares in the North. Market share is a strategy for school districts. It's not a one or two-year, it's a long-range, how do we want to build connections and value to our families such that they begin to choose the option of this public school district versus other options? I would say that this has become more, more of an issue for boards and for offices of superintendents in the last 10 years. 10 years ago, it was like everybody just assumed market share. And now, very few people assume market share. It's what is our market share, and then what is our strategy to go into this? The reason why we do this, so just so you know, the reason why we've been doing this in this way is that for many districts, market share represents, market share gain typically represents more students in development. And many times, school districts don't understand that. So again, sometimes market share gain represents as much or more than lots of new developments. And to think about it, it's typically existing housing and people you know. So, this is just giving an example. So what we did is, we said, "Well, what is it by, by the different age groups and the different boundaries?" And you look at the resident students, which are those that enrolled, and what percentage? So I took Lake Elmo as an example. 75% of the students in Lake Elmo Elementary School boundary attend at least one of the schools in elementary, and 25% of the students in that boundary at elementary age choose another option. Now, from a administrator superintendent, you're not going to get 100. Okay? So typically, and I think we've talked about, like a 75% market share is a reasonable market share, but you're going to see the impact of that. So sometimes there's, why don't we have X market share? Well, your market share is actually a condition of where you are in the marketplace, and what's reasonable and what's a stretch. So at 70% to a 75%, one way of looking at it, it's a reasonable, but not an easy stretch. So what we did is, we modeled, what would that market share look like in actual additional students at different age groups and different boundaries? So you can see in, like, Afton Lakeland, it would mean an average, possibly 38 additional students. In Oakland Middle, it'd be 107. High school across the district, it'd be additional 200 students. So I'd like you to think about that market share represents just over 700 students potential for you, distributed across the whole system. This is typically a good work session discussion between a superintendent and a board about targets and where we want to, where we want to go and what are strategies, because you can monitor this over time. You can add, you can put in strategies and monitor it and see if your, if your plans are working. Okay? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So now we're going to shift. Questions?
Sorry, for me to help to get better context, so I hear a percentage, you know, it's always compared to what. So what would be like in confidence? Like, you know, these are obviously major implications that are based on this data, you know, where you feel solid that this is good versus above confidence or below confidence. Is there a metrics that you use for a district?
Well, what I would say is, given the current marketplace of, as we've talked about, about faith-based and charter-based options that are in your district, and we typically look at the robustness or stability of those. Okay? Because what school districts have to realize is that you are the safety net for charter schools not working. Because charter schools, again, we've worked with districts where charter schools have gone out, gone out of business. Guess who's responsible for having space? The public school district. And so when we take a look at this, it seemed to us, and working with Dr. Funk and his team, a 75% seemed like what I would call a reasonable, that you could have, and I think with work, you could probably get there. But it's not going to happen in a year. Okay?
And so the change in the market share, that it's less in some schools is because our capture rate is a little higher.
Yes.
So there's not maybe as much to go up percent-wise.
You're correct.
Okay.
Yep. Now we're switching gears, and we're looking at, so some of the board members might not be aware. We monitor all developments in the district on a quarterly basis, and it is, it's based upon actual, actual physical records and observations. It's, it's not theoretical. So on a quarterly basis, we monitor all developments, and these are all, every circle you see is a development we track. And we also track all housing sales for you on a monthly basis. So in the, what you see on this map is the, that color I still can't get a name for. Those circle are single-family homes. Your light green are active townhome development, your dark green are going to be future. And you also, you have future, those are platted, future home developments. What this all adds up to right now is 750 single-family homes and townhomes in development, with nearly 400 in planned. So that's 1,150 homes, which we believe will probably yield about 350 K-12 students. Based upon what we've been doing, we've been monitoring, as developments have come online in your district, what's the actual number of students that have enrolled from new developments, and enrolled in what grade levels over the last 10 years in your district? So taking that into account, we come up with this, this model of, this is what's known. So if a development opens up tomorrow morning, we'll probably know within 30 days. But we're not aware of this. And this has happened in districts where developments have opened up literally six months later, and they say, "We have to take a look at it," which is why we suggest you do this on an annual basis.
When you're monitoring these housing developments, do you factor in kind of price point for the different developments as well? Because you mentioned that that would impact families' ability to afford them.
So when we take a look at homes that have been developed at certain price points, right? Then we say, "At those price points, how many houses, at those price point, how many kids came to your school?" And what we can tell you was typical in many districts is that when you get into the very high, high price points, you actually see the number of school-aged children dropping off pretty quickly. And sometimes people don't realize that. Okay?
Why is that? Why do you think that happens?
Many times, it's, many times those, the higher-priced homes are second or third homes, and they're not childbearing years. Okay, that's one. Or it's people moving into those homes that don't, that aren't having children.
Do you have any trends that you notice in our district regarding like townhomes? Because I'm always amazed, you know, how many townhomes I'm seeing. Do they yield less, how much? Does it just depend?
It depends, you typically, your, if you take a look at your, your townhomes typically yield less for the, for the purpose of, sometimes the townhomes, you'll see townhomes go in, but you may not realize how many of them are, for example, 55-plus. So they'll put in a whole development, and people go, "There's a whole lot," yep, but there, there's not going to be any kids. The other thing that happens is many times, townhomes are single points for those entering into the, entering into the workforce, for a younger age, and quite honestly, in their twenties, early thirties, that may or may, that may not be having children. So they have a tendency to have less kids than single-family homes.
And that's true in our district too?
Yes.
Okay.
This map is a little bit different. So this is a mapping of the, of the, of the bringing together, where are there, where are there homes that have not been sold in quite a while? I believe it's over 20 or 25 years. Residing in areas of above-average 65 and olders. So we're looking for this combination of homeownership and people moving into retirement. Because those are the, those are the highest probability for generational shifts, especially if there is any form of senior housing going on. So by the way, those who work, because we've worked in senior housing, senior housing looks at this about where to place senior housing. Because one thing people like, they like to move where? Close to where they live. So when you take a look at it, if you're not, just to let you know, there's around just over 1,100 homes. So generational shift in terms of homes almost equals all of your new developments. So for our boards, I'd say, "Oh, our generational shift potential is at the same scale as all of our new developments." They're at almost the exact number, which we found interesting. And they're also, as you can see, they're not evenly distributed around your district. They're clustered in certain areas. Okay?
I was just going to say, do you, do you rank these in any kind of priority? Do you, or do you, it's an even shot, what's going to turn over first, or?
Well, we don't get into that, that level. What we find to be important is that, as we take a look at this, that we work with the office of the superintendent to monitor home sales. So if we were to take certain areas and say, "We're going to create some target areas that we want to watch," then what we begin to watch for is, where is there abnormal uptick of home sales occurring? And then sometimes we turn to the superintendent and said, "From these home sales, where are you getting your newest, your newest kids signing up or interest calls?" Because sometimes, guess what? Because sometimes, guess what? They lay lineup. And so we can begin to see the impact of that. All right? And then we-
Sorry, one, one last quick question about the generational shift. And just looking at these, the pockets on the map here, yes, our new homes seem to be heavier in the south. There are definitely some developments in the north. And then it's split also a little bit north-south with generational shift. Is there a, like, are we having, does it even out with generational shift more in the north versus the south? Or is it more heavily, like, how does that factor in?
I would, I would offer a way of looking at it that, as you look at this map, the, I, I'm not going to get into, like, exact percentages, but generally, the patterns of this is, is you've got some in the north, but there is, there's, there's more houses, what I would say, thirty-six south in this pattern, just like development. So we don't see generational shift. If the question underneath is, is generational shift like a counteracting influence?
Yes.
No. Generational shift actually is more in the same pattern as development.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Enrollment projections. So what we did is we took a look at your current enrollment. So the green coming to the, to the line, the vertical line, is your historical enrollment K-12. And then what we do is we take the first or the second middle row. If you take birth rates plus survival cohort, that hundred and one percent, plus planned development, which is already known, and generational shift, if generational shift occurred in the next five to seven years, then you would see that blue line. So you can say, oh, here's where our green lines were been going. If we take a look at those factors and we look at your facilities as designed for their current academic programs, you'd go from about ninety percent to about ninety-seven percent utilization. And as a board, you probably breathe in air and you go, we're just fine. But there's more. Then if you add in future development and potential market share, then that, that facility utilization begins to go more towards a hundred and eight percent. Hmm. And so that creates this cone, as you see, of where your, where your total, your total in terms of student populations go. And this is assuming some future development, market share growth, and generational shift. Okay? But now we're going to break this down.
Dennis, really quick, have you looked at, I mean, is this kind of current reality for housing? Because I know the projections for, you know, where we are now, maybe even moving into next year is different than last year.
Yeah, it, it constantly changes. So I'll give an example. When there was COVID, did you have COVID here?
No.
Just a little bit of humor? Really? Some people don't like the humor. When you had COVID, most school districts said, oh, housing's going to slow down. Housing sped up. Why did housing speed up during COVID? Low interest rates, right? People staying home. So we've had districts where housing development, in certain cases, we, we tracked, where they were tracking twenty, twenty-five percent that had a plan in terms of development speed. Now, I can tell you that if you went back four years and three years when COVID started, the first, the first thing that we heard from boards and super, offices, superintents was that we know that, that housing's going to all slow down. And our response is, well, we don't know. Let's watch it. And as we watched it, we could see within the first six, eight months that it wasn't. And we said, wait a minute, we're not changing our projections because we don't see any slowdown. And I've also had districts who have said, we think we've got a good, speaking of a couple right under my head, we, we got this under control. And literally, six months after doing a report like this, they come in with a thousand to twelve hundred home developments that no one knew were, were coming. And you go, well, this is going to shift. So it's, I would offer you from a board perspective, it's more important to monitor than to believe that this is like numbers we bet on. It's, it's modeling. We're trying to keep you ahead of the curve. So the way that we look at this, it typically takes three to four years for a development. We want to help keep the administration and the board ahead of that curve so you're never behind it. When it shifts, you need to know. But we'll go on.
I'm sorry, as part of your service, do you reach out to city planners or?
We work with all your planners.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, we work with all the cities, the groups. Yep.
Perfect.
Elementary, we're doing the same thing with elementary. And you can see some similar numbers. We'll go on to the next. You're looking at middle school. So if you don't want to, if you want to, if you want to stay at seventy percent market share, then you're going to see, without any more development, you're going to see that. But if you begin to invest and improve your value proposition, your identity, reputation in the public square, and market share begins to go up, you should be aware that you're going to be, probably be in between these cones. And then we have high school. And as you can see, even the high school, a hundred, a hundred-one, a hundred-and-two percent typically to facility utilization is not like, oh, what are we going to do? But you do have what we would call some hotspots, because these are just averages. So let's look at those, areas of concern. So we identified with Dr. Funk and his team that there were four schools, as you can see here, projected out long range about where they would be with projected, which is that lower line, or potential, the higher line, where now you're getting, even projected, you're into the teens to a hundred and thirty percent. And if you look at projected, you're, you're well above that. So this is a case for, yes, we have areas that where development and change is needed. If you look at the rest of the system in school, there isn't this level of concern. And lo and behold, guess what? This also lines up with generational shift, right? And development. Same pattern. It also lines up with your heat map. So as we saw, there isn't a contradiction in the data. The data, the trend, the analysis, and your current conditions all, all came together in a pretty, what we would call, it's a pretty coherent view of the data and the condition and the strategy. So some of the key messages is that you're, you need to add capacity at elementary and middle and address aging facilities. You're projected to grow in school-aged populations inclusive of these. And you have the option or the opportunity of strategy influence in market share, monitoring housing plant, not yet planned housing development, and monitoring generational shifts. Because the thing about generational shifts, they will occur. It's just a matter of when. So an example, as I said earlier, people say, well, we don't know when people are going to go into generational shifts. And what we do is we watch the senior housing market, the fifty-five, sixty-five-plus housing market. Because as that market develops, that is usually the energy for generational shifts as people move. So my hope is that these key messages help you boil this down to one, two, three. That's what we're, we need to talk about and discuss moving forward. If we can be of any assistance, we will be. We're in constant contact with Dr. Funk and his team. And we're just down the road and you're fun people to work with, so.
Yes.
I just had a question, especially with that last slide that you showed us, the areas of concern.
Right.
It really seems like things are kind of clear-cut, you know, in terms of the fact that we have growth concerns in the south part of the district and specifically with these particular areas in elementaries. Are things usually that clear-cut when you do work with other districts?
No. Sometimes they're muddy. Sometimes it's not all clear-cut. Sometimes we work with districts and in working with them in detail, because we go through all the facilities, the buildings, we, we walk through every single one in detail, sometimes we uncover. So I'll give you an example, Director, I'll give you an example. In one district, they were looking at needing for facility expansions. And we worked in detail. We worked in detail, we started, shall I say, we helped illuminate the fact that their use of their facilities, we were able to work with them to show them that they were freeing up six to eight classrooms per building. Okay, that, what that did is, in the midst of development, it delayed the need for facilities development by nearly a decade. We don't see that here. So as we've looked in detail with the, with the team, what we see is that this is fairly clear-cut. And it's, it's, I would say that, I would just offer you this, probably more than fifty percent of the time, it's muddy. Where we have to keep, we, we would not be coming to you until we've worked with the team for a long time. In this, in this case, it, it was, it all came together.
Can I ask, this, your projected is twenty thirty-one, twenty thirty-two. Do we have anything that's even tighter?
So we have it year by year.
Okay.
So we, we typically do like a five-year and, like you can see here. So we suggest that you take like a five-year and a ten-year.
Okay.
Because what you have to really look at is, so if you look at some of these, you would say you have, you, in some cases, you don't have time, you need to move quickly.
That's correct.
In other cases, it's, wait a minute, we can monitor. So you might have some that are sooner, some that are later. But we work in detail. And we're able to look out every year.
Because I'm just curious, on these four schools, is this, I mean, some of these are very problematic. Are they problematic now, five years, ten years?
If you just go to the chart.
Is it by school?
Yeah. You're, think about this, you're, you're problematic on some of these right now.
Okay, that's kind of what I was.
You're, you're, not all, but you're problematic because you're, one way of thinking about it, you can deal with a hundred, a hundred-five percent, but you start getting up to a hundred and eight percent, and your teachers and everybody in the school are, they just say, hey, you can't get around and we're not going to use closets. Right? But you just can't get around. And at these, at a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and thirty, it's, no. Doesn't work.
Thank you. So the truth is, I think we know, we've always known that this is, I wouldn't call it a problem, really. We've always known that there's growth in one area. So it's, it's something that we've always known, but this confirms what we've always known. It's a beautiful problem to have.
Yes.
You know, we've always said we want growth, growth, growth. I hope that the solution will not be problematic. And you're right, you know, funding, money is always at the core of some of these delays. And the more you delay, the more expensive it becomes. The more you delay, the more you're exposing not just our school system, but also the community and the pressure on the facilities with respect to students being able to work in those spaces. And of course, our teachers. And so this is a district that has everything going for it. So my hope is that with this, that it's very clear-cut and with the track record we've had in this district, especially with respect to successes in our educational system, that we will see this as something that is quite urgent, because this is something we've been talking about now for years. So hopefully, it will be a benefit towards, with respect to what we're seeing.
From, from an outside perspective, knowing, knowing this district fairly well over years, I think it's clear-cut. I think you're accurate, you as a district and as district leaders are aware. I also believe that you can be very successful in doing this. It's not going to be easy, but I think you can be successful in doing this. And districts have proven that when, when it comes together clearly like this and people know it, see it, your families, your staff, your students know and feel this, right? This is not a mystery. So just work with it and work with each other. And, yeah, bring good plans and bring together and, and, and bring it together. The community typically supports.
Well, I, I also look at it as kind of a twofold opportunity where there's this market share, that, that chart that you're sharing. There's significant opportunity, I mean, we have to care for the kids that are coming. The housing is coming. It's coming in a certain area of our district, and so we need to account for that. But there's opportunity to improve within our, our market share, which is another takeaway.
And, and, and I'll offer this, and then I, I believe time is up. I believe that the, the same sort of work that you, that need to do to be able to address this issue in terms of just raw development and who you are and the products and services and the quality of your programming that you offer are the same thing that's going to help you address market share. They're not completely, the strategies aren't this far apart. They're actually fairly related. And so when you have a facilities development need and you have a market share, our suggestion to the leadership of the district, think of them as slightly different, but not that far apart, because the same conditions impact both.
Superintendent?
You know, I've only been here six months, but one of the things that I have heard in my time here is class sizes are large. So when I'm seeing these numbers with our current class sizes, if we're ever going to want to reduce class sizes, we're going to need to do something for the space, or else this is even going to be worse. So that's just something, another point to, to take into consideration.
Would, Superintendent, I just wanted to ask you, since you're, you have the floor here, throughout this process, and this is your first time doing it in Stillwater, obviously you've done it in all your other experience, was there anything that stood out to you or that you think we should know, even be on with?
I, I think, you know, I think you, Dennis just said it the best, this is clear-cut.
Okay.
I, I, I mean, there's not been, you know, the, the other thing I would, I would say, and here's the, the piece that, you know, you can go back to the beginning of this presentation where they're talking about the percentages. You know, a concern is, you're going to hear, okay, well, we have to do something. One of the things you're going to, we will bring you as an option, of course, is, okay, well, what if we re-boundaryed the district and shifted kids in the south and put them into some vacant places in the north? Certainly, we can take a look at that as an option, but I would also share with you, there's some significant opportunity cost there. Okay, now we're going to have to bus ten miles away when I live in the southern part of the district, when I can go to a school in a different district, that's maybe a couple miles from my home. So that is for folks out there saying, well, you've got the capacity in the district. So we will absolutely, absolutely bring that as a, as a potential option to you to see if, how we can, we can balance this thing out, but.
This was before your time, but I was the, I was on the boundary change committee and Mark can attest to this, too. I mean, it was going to get uncomfortable for everyone in the district to do further boundary changes, not just the south. It was going to get really uncomfortable for the center of our district in terms of boundary changes. So boundary changes affect everyone and, and certainly the budget, but, yeah.
Thank you. You know, you're right. Those are basically options if the population was not growing as fast as it is, because then we would just be putting bandage on a wound that never heals. So the opportunity cost there, but it's also the alternative that is forgotten, you know? So for me, I think boundary changes are always ways to, those are some of the presumptions, especially if we're not trying to spend money. But the truth is, we're spending more by all of those boundary changes. Not only spending more, but also impacting the day-to-day activities of the student. Then you have to wake up at four AM. And I know we all complain about, you know, kids waking up so early. So there's so many mental health, psychological health, you know, just physical health of our children and how much they learn. Teachers also have to wake up early, you know, because the kids are going to be there early. So a lot of changes that might affect our well-being, the well-being of our parents, because then they have to wake up early as well. So there are so many things that, you know, that we don't think of in terms of the alternative that we focus just squarely in some of the other opportunities that we're talking about. It may not be the answer for our district, because that is something that we've talked about the last couple of years, that as much as we don't want to spend money, we forget the impact on our kids and on our families.
So hope it's been useful, gets you going. And if you have any questions, I'd ask you to filter your questions to the superintendent and then you, I can be contacted and our team can, can assist you moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Attention.
All right, we're going to continue. We have one other report. All right, we're going to continue, we have one other report. And we're on to policy. A second reading for revised policies four sixteen, four eighteen, and four nineteen. And that would be Dr. Cherry. Welcome.
Thank you, Chair Sherman. I'm with the board, Superintendent Funk. This evening, I am presenting to you a second reading of three of our policies that are related to alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs. These three policies are all currently quite outdated, the ones that we have in place. And so the additions or the, the revisions that are being proposed are all due to updates, changes in state and federal statutes. And so this is modeled off of the Minnesota School Board Association model policies. And since I was here last, at our last business meeting doing a first read, there have not been any recommended changes or updates. And so at this point in time, it's really a, a second read and providing an opportunity for any questions or comments you might have.
Yeah, I was noticing, it's like these policies are, are they almost thirty years old? Is that? I mean, so they're old, they have not been updated. So I, I can see why the laws have changed.
Yes, yes.
Were there any questions on any of these? And reading through it.
Great.
Seeing no questions, we'll come back at the next business meeting. And if there are any changes ahead of that, please send them my way and.
All right.
We'll be back.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, we're going to move on to action items now. And the first one, so I think you're sticking around, and we're adding in Caleb here. We have the six hundred series. So I guess, I don't know if we should, I don't know how you want to do this, but for voting purposes, we're going to have to break them down individually. So maybe we start doing that as, just talking about six oh one first?
Sounds great. Sounds great. And I think I'm just going to ask you to.
So I'll do this first. I'm going to make a motion to approve six, a policy six oh one. And I would like a second, and then we can have discussion and hear what is said. Is there, do I have a second?
Sure.
Director Kelsenberg? And now I'll give you the floor and then we can discuss.
So, policy six oh one, had, since our second reading last month, there's not been any amendments or changes. So it is as was presented last, last time we met.
Any final changes on policy six oh one that people had? I think all my concerns were addressed, so. Seeing no further discussion, I think this is one that we could probably just call the vote on. All those in favor of approving, approving policy six oh one, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, let's move on to policy six oh three. And, um, let's see, does anyone have a motion?
I'll move it.
Okay.
To approve.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve evaluation of instructional program, policy six oh three. Is there a second? Director Porbani? Seconds? And any comments, changes, questions?
Similar to six oh one, no changes on six oh three since our last reading.
And I'd like to point out, these were incredibly old policies. So, um, with no questions, we'll just call for a vote here. All those in favor of approving policy six oh three, raise your hand and say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Six oh three passes. We will go on to policy six oh four. And this is instructional curriculum. Policy six oh four. I will go ahead and make the motion to approve, if I can get a second.
Second.
Director Petrie? And then we can have discussion if there have been any comments on this.
Similar to the, the first two, there were no changes since our first, our second reading.
Great. Okay. All those in favor of approving policy six oh four, instructional curriculum, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Let's go to six oh six. Selection and review of instructional resources. So I need a motion, and then we will have some discussion, I believe, on this one, some changes, so. All right. We have a motion to approve six oh six, is there a second? Director Kelsenberg? Okay, want to go through this?
All right. There were two slight changes to policy six oh six since our second reading. I would direct your attention to page six, Roman numeral seven, subsection A. We struck the words "or employees." That brings it into alignment with the previous section that speaks to the review of materials and the reconsideration. The second change was also in section seven, subsection C three, kind of towards the, the bottom middle of that paragraph. We struck the superintendent from the membership of the Resource Review Committee to prevent a possible conflict as the superintendent is part of the review process, the appeals process, which is mentioned in sub point five of that section. So those are the two changes since, since we met to review the second reading.
Okay. Questions or comments? Yes.
So I have a couple of questions. Number one, just for the benefit of the community, I wonder if you can just sort of give us a broad idea about how we approve curriculum? Like, I know that a lot of times it goes along with the schedule from the state. And maybe every ten years, they make changes to what are, what the standards are. And then we, of course, are required to have curriculum that meets that. So can you just sort of give us the process about how that all works when we approve new curriculum?
Sure. So when, we have a, I think a couple of months ago, I shared our curricular instructional review process, which is aligned to our state standards review work. So about every ten years, the state will revise their standards. And then as a district, we review those changes. Review not just the, the standards themselves, but oftentimes there is a, an instructional shift that takes place within those standards, which often, not always, but often those standards revisions require additional materials. Simply because they're ten years old also suggests maybe it's time to, to refresh as materials are, are out of print often, oftentimes, or the materials are, are no longer usable. So we, so we have a, roughly a, a ten-year review process aligned with the state standards. And within that process, we bring together a, a district committee of teachers to review the standards. And as part of that work, reviewing all the different curricular options that are available to us. So this previous last year, as we're looking at our, our science materials with our elementary committee, brought together that, that group of, of teacher leaders to look at that. We also had tapped into local expertise, professor at River Falls, who does extensive work with us as well, with our, our pre-service teachers, just to review again the standards and the materials that are available. And so this committee then reviews all the different options, identifies, you know, two to three that we want to really go deeper into. We review, we ask for samples of those, we go deeper into that review. And so that is what happened with our elementary science process this last year. We also had some open houses for staff to be able to come in, to get their hands into materials, to review them, to see what, what they're, what they include, what they don't, how they might meet standards, and so on. And then we also engage with our World's Best Workforce, which is one of the committees that's outlined in statute as well as in policy here. And that, that committee was able to, to look into the materials. Again, they, we have them on hand. We facilitated a, a conversation and a discussion, looking into, you know, what's available. What do we see online? What do we see, the hands-on activities? How does it meet our needs? So we reviewed that work with our, our World's Best Workforce Committee. And so later, later this year, we'll be bringing a recommendation then based on all of that process to the board. That will outline then, here's our request, here's a recommendation for a new elementary science curriculum and instructional program, which would include cost, cost components to that recommendation. So that would be a, a fairly typical process when we're talking core instructional resources. So I would highlight the policy, remember, top of my head, here it is. Policy, section, Roman numeral four, I'm sorry, Roman numeral five, subsection D two. And then we just break apart the difference between core instructional resources and supporting instructional resources. So our core instructional resources go through that very intensive vetting process to identify, here's the consistent curriculum that we want to use across the district, utilizing teachers in that process, looking at early implementation or pilot perhaps, as well as bringing it to that, that World's Best Workforce, which is the, the, the Community Advisory Committee for Curriculum. Additionally, there are supporting instructional resources. These are resources that teachers may, may choose in the moment to include as part of their curriculum, as part of their instructional program. These are materials that support the core instruction, that may become core instruction at some point if they continue to use it every year, if more teachers begin to use it. So there is a process to take some of those supporting instructional resources that a teacher may choose that matches current events or that sparks, is sparked by student interest, and bring that into a, a more formal aspect of the curriculum.
Okay. So, oh, did you?
I, I just wanted to, to make this statement that as I'm coming into the district and I'm learning about different processes, you know, we had a, a meeting the other day where we talked makeup of committees. And I, I asked the question, how are these committees made up? And what I have been told is the process has evolved and that we've done different things over the past few years. So one of the things that we are looking at as a team is, all right, how do we reexamine how that the committees are put together so that we can have representation from the community on a, on a wider basis so that we can, because what we want to do is get input from our entire community, from all perspectives on it. So that's one of the things we're taking a look at, is how we do that moving forward. And I don't have an answer for you today, but I, I do, do want you to know that this is something that we're taking a look at.
And I, I appreciate that because I think the policy is the first step, right? And then it's how you're going to implement the, the spirit of these policies, once they're updated. And I think that when we talk to community members, I think there is a desire to have that looked at. So I'm glad that we identified that as a group. I know everyone here is relatively new. I mean, I, I feel like people following the business that we talk about, we, that we talk about curriculum, they don't understand, or maybe they know, but the wider audience does not know how new you are. I mean, Caleb is just starting, his team is just starting, we have a new superintendent, our assistant superintendent hasn't been here all that long. So we're kind of, I'm excited with the direction that we're headed. And I think that our community is looking forward to some of that, those changes too.
I'm kind of taken off of those comments. While we do this work looking into these committees for curriculum development, one of the requests that I've been hearing is the desire to share that information in a very clear way through our website too, to make sure that we are communicating effectively to the broader community or having it placed somewhere that that information can be located and readily accessible.
We updated it today.
Look at that.
When we took a look at it, so that it's, it's being, it's not completely finished yet, but an updated version is out already today, so.
Great. Yes?
So, so we've got, let's say we've gone through the whole process and we have a new curriculum, whatever that might be, science, let's say, that's coming up for us. As that gets rolled out and teachers get training in how to, you know, how to deliver it, there might be opportunity for tweaks or changes or whatever. What is the process for that as, you know, how would a teacher bring something forward like that? A science teacher? You know, in terms of making changes to the curriculum at that point?
So we have, within the Department of Teaching and Learning, we have curriculum coordinators that work in, in all the subject areas. So we have four individuals split across elementary and secondary with different departments that they work with. And so they have, they have the pulse of the teachers that they've been working with to do that very thing. And so I talk about this, this ten-year process, but we also recognize within that, there is the need to be nimble, to look at our student data, to make some, some immediate changes, both at a, a individual teacher classroom level, as well as perhaps at a, at a grade level, based on the needs that we're, we're seeing. And so part of that might be within our, our professional learning, community structure, our collaborative action teams that are reviewing data and, and then in that data review of, of students, identify what do we need to do differently to improve our student performance? Perhaps it's materials, perhaps it's instruction. So they're able to work in that and identify goal areas and, and additional resources, working with the coordinators and, and myself to identify some of that. And other times, it might be, I'll mention our, our fifth grade math teachers. We met last week because we identified a couple of gaps and holes. Even though the standards are old and we've had materials for a while, we've identified based on a, a variety of factors, we need to revisit some of our alignment documents, some of the, the work that we're doing to better utilize the materials that we do have. And so there are processes in place utilizing the, the expertise and the, the coordinators within teaching and learning to make that happen.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Harker? I actually changed course a little bit, have a question about one of the changes that was made. And just since the last reading. And it's under section seven A. The first of the changes that you mentioned earlier was to strike "or employees." And I'm just curious why that was decided kind of after that second reading? I just hadn't heard any talk about it at the board table. So can you give me a little background on why that decision was made? And potentially like why it was in there in the first place? And then why we're deciding to take it out?
Sure. To why it was in there, I can't, I can't speak to. That was part of the previous policy or procedures. In fact, much of what we see here was, was previous policy or procedures. We moved some of the procedures into policy language. So that was one of them. And as, as we looked at that, and, and actually when I, when I go back and look at section six, where it speaks to a lot of the same groups, employees were not listed within section six. So it makes sense to bring that into alignment. The other component of that is within, internally within our process, we have the curriculum coordinators I mentioned. We have these processes within curricular instructional review to review the materials that we have, to remove pieces that, that are objectionable or, you know, should not be, be there any longer. So there are processes in place for employees to engage in that work. It doesn't need to follow the same formal process of a review committee.
Any other? Yes?
Yeah, so, you know, thank you, everyone, for all the time and effort. You know, having watched from the, the sideline and, and seeing all the questions and the process that takes place. It's definitely very labor-intensive. So gratitude, everyone that's been involved in this process. And one takeaway for me, you know, is just the, definitely the field of education has been increasingly, is, you know, is increasingly complex. It's just, there's a lot of moving parts to that. And I think, you know, what I appreciate coming in to the board is, you know, that, you know, the, the board and the district is continuing to be more intentional, creating transparency, you know, through this policy work, both for the school board as well as for the community as a whole. You know, so everyone can better understand that. And I think that's an awesome opportunity. And there's still some opportunities to improve with the website and other things that are in the works. But, you know, I think for me, I look back and say, you know, what are we here to do? And at the end of the day, we're here for student achievement. And at the end of the day, we're here for student achievement. And what does that take to accomplish that? You know, I believe that, you know, it takes, you know, empowering those subject matter experts at both the district administration level and, you know, for our teachers in the classroom, you know, to really, you know, implement those core and supporting resources that I think will allow them to focus their time and attention on teaching excellence so they can get that student achievement, you know, versus potentially dealing with red tape, which in any job, that's a time suck, for lack of a better term. So, so, yeah. And I also just appreciate, you know, in the language, there's an opportunity for families to challenge, you know, any type of concerns in the curriculum that are in conflict with their own family values and you want to continue to honor that. And I think that's now a much more clear process, which I think is really important. Plus, you know, this is just a living, breathing document. I think it's important just to keep in mind that will continue to evolve as, you know, education evolves and our community evolves. So I just wanted to share that, just being new and having the ability to watch, you know, and re-watch both the board meetings on the 20th and the 22nd, and then doing a lot of reading and taking everything into account. So, so, yeah, I think it's appreciative of all the work that's gone into this.
And I do, I hear a lot from our community, and Andrew, you just said this, that they really want to be involved, they want to be able to engage with the district. So I think that, to your point, to Superintendent Funk, who was kind of committed to this, just making sure that our website's up to date and there's information out there and that they can easily have access to the materials that they're seeking. So it's a work in progress, but this is the first start. So thank you to all the work from your team, from, you know, everyone on the World's Best Workforce and all their work in the community. So, great. If there aren't any other questions, we'll go ahead and vote on this. Seeing them. All those in favor of approving policy 606, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Caleb? Now we're going to move on to another action item, and this is a revocation. So we'll break this up into, first, we're going to be looking at revoking 606.1. And we'll go to Dr. Cherry.
Thank you, Chair Sherman and members of the board. This is a policy that, as you can see, it was another one that's rather old, 2003, and it's labeled "resource identification and use." This simple statement really is inherent in policy 606. So at this time, we're just trying to streamline our policies, clean things up. And so at this time, we're recommending that the board revoke policy 606.1.
Makes sense. I'm going to go ahead and make the motion to revoke policy 606.1. Can I get a second?
Second.
Great, great. Director Petrie? And all those in favor of the revocation of 606.1, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Then we'll move on to the revocation of policy 606.2, sanctioned risk.
Thank you, Chair Sherman. Again, I'm just going to say ditto. 606.2 sanctioned risk. The statement that's here really is incorporated and embedded throughout our revised policy 606. So with the intent to, again, clean up our policies, make things more streamlined, we are recommending that the board revoke policy 606.2.
If I can just add, so the exact language was built into the general statement of policy section in 606.
Great. All right. I will go ahead and make a motion to revoke 606.2. And can I get a second? Great. Director Kelsenberg? All those in favor of revoking policy 606.2, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And before we leave this policy, I just want to kind of, and I, you know, I thanked World's Best Workforce and our staff, but I really, our policy committee did some amazing work this year. So I want to thank Director Hocker, Petrie, and Poor Benny. Your work has been just outstanding this last year. And we had a lot of that on our board goals. And we accomplished, I think, everything we really set out to in 2021, 2022. So thank you very much.
And I want to echo that, Director Hocker, for driving the ship there. It was, you pushed everything along, so thanks for doing that.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. We are going to move on to our next action item, which is our school board vacancy appointment timeline. I thought we would look at the timeline first before we tackle the resolution, which will be done by roll call vote. So we can look at it here, but we have the resolution being passed tonight. And then tomorrow, the application will be on the website tomorrow at noon. And we have it open for two weeks. We discussed that at the last board meeting. So it'll be open through February 8, accepting applications online. You can print it out, you can email it, there's a number of different ways, all on the application. We will conduct our interviews on February 14, which is just the way the calendar fell. So sorry to ruin more Valentine's Days. But we are going to conduct interviews and we discussed no more, inviting no more than six candidates back. So that is included in the procedure. And then February 28 is when we will appoint a successor. And then there is a 30-day period for a petition. If a petition arises, it kicks in a different process. So it's just standard operating procedure, following the law. So that would be March 30 is when that person would become official, with their first meeting being April 11. So you can kind of see how that timeframe lays out. This is with intentionally not creating additional meetings because we really are trying to kind of focus on our existing calendar this year. And so if there isn't any objection to this...
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
On behalf of the candidates, can I appeal that we move the February 14 to date? I'm being selfish, I think, for me, too.
Well, you have a meeting. But, you know, if we do that, we're pushing it out further. We, I mean, in April? Yeah.
I mean, when do you suggest moving it? The 13th? To a different day than the 14th?
That's correct. I'm sure they wouldn't mind.
That would be a moving of the official meeting, right? Because that's our posted date, which I suppose we could do. I would have to check availability of this room.
Yeah, we, yeah. Anything is possible.
Does anyone else want to? I mean, that would be looking at not only this, I guess we'd have to make a motion and approve a date?
You can, here's a couple of different options for you. All right, you can, you can keep the 14th on the calendar.
Yeah.
But if nobody shows up, there's no meeting. Okay?
Okay.
That is a, that's a fact. So if there's no quorum, there's no meeting.
Okay.
All right. And so then, before the 14th or after the 14th, you can direct us to, okay, we want to have a special meeting and pick what date that's going to be. And then we just inform the public that it'll be, you know, February 13, 16, 7, however you want to do it as a school board here.
Okay.
Because we have really two things on the agenda that night. We're going to have the, a reading on achievement and integration grant, and then we're going to be interviewing school board candidates.
Okay.
So we'll be ready with the A&amp;I grant.
Okay.
Whenever, whenever you want to do that. So that's just...
Well, and how does, I mean...
The logistical background for you.
Right. How does, does anyone else, I should say that, does anyone else feel similarly to Director Poor Benny?
My wife does.
I'm flexible, so whatever anybody wants, I'm good.
If we can approve this, I guess, as-is, with the caveat that...
I just, I think I need a clarification. So if we're moving, we move the entire meeting from the 14th or we would just move the interviews?
There's just two things on the agenda that night.
Okay.
It would be achievement and integration, initial application review, and then the interview. So, yeah, I would suggest you move that whole meeting to a different night.
Right. So we would essentially just be rescheduling a business meeting for a different date outside of the 14th. But I would need to work with staff to make sure that everyone... So we'll have to have that date come later, so.
But you could keep the rest of the calendar the same.
Yeah. So let's, we'll look at that date and I'll communicate with the board on what we can do and we can make an update with the candidates that apply. But I would like to approve the timeline and then we can make that change. Okay. Do we have a motion? I can make a motion to approve.
I can make a motion to approve it.
Okay. I'll have you second.
Okay.
All right. So with that caveat, which I'll be in touch with the board and we'll post it online and update at the meeting, let's go ahead and prove, take a vote. How many people? Let's see. We have a motion, a second? All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Is it a resolution? Do we need to do it?
The resolution is next on the agenda.
Oh, good, okay.
Okay.
Getting ahead of myself.
Then we have our resolution. Great. And our resolution is up on the screen, just outlines everything here. I'm just looking to see if we have anything on the 14th. We have the 14th in the resolution.
Yep. Okay. Then I think maybe you better make a decision.
Hate changing it for staff. Joan, do we know if the space is available on the 13th?
I'd have to look it up.
How about the 7th?
Our applications are open till the 8th.
Okay.
The 13th is available.
The 13th is available? Does the 13th look, it's a Monday, I don't know if anyone...
What about the 15th? Sorry.
We typically avoid Wednesdays, but I'm fine with Wednesday.
I'm not available on the 15th.
Oh, you're not available on the 15th?
Sorry.
I'm avail, I'm not a conflict, so I can do the 13th or the 16th on a Thursday. We probably have this room already booked in the...
The 16th is fine. I won't be available on Monday.
You won't be available Monday? So it has to be the 16th? Okay.
I could do the 16th.
Thank you.
Everyone do? Okay. Is the 16th available here?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Joan.
We'll make it available.
Okay.
It's available after 16.
Okay. So we could do it at 6. Okay. So I am going to, we have, do we have, this is a roll call vote, but I guess, let's change. Can we get in into this and change the document, Joan, so that it reads the 16th, Thursday, the 16th, February 16th? It's on page two, under number four.
Yeah, I can't do it.
Okay.
That's fine.
Okay.
You've annotated the change. You're good.
Perfect. All right. We need a roll call vote on this, and that's the only time, that's the only change that needs to be made.
Did you do a motion a second?
Oh, yes. I will make the motion to change, to approve the resolution with the date changed to February 16th, under number four. Do I have a second? Okay. Got a second? Dr. Poor Benny, seconds? And then we need a roll call vote on this. Director Hocker?
Yes.
Director Kelsenberg?
Yes.
Director Petrie?
Yes.
Director Poor Benny?
Yes.
Director Sherman? I'm sorry, Director Thielander?
Yes.
Chair Sherman? Yes. Motion passes. So we have the resolution approved and then we'll go ahead and update the timeline to reflect the resolution. And then, I didn't see this on the agenda.
Oh, it's under consent.
Thank you. Okay. Great. That's it? Anyone has anything else? Otherwise, we're adjourned. Thank you, guys.